Good evening, everyone. Now 6:00 PM, May 21st, 2024. Called to order the planning commission for the City of Moraine. I have a roll, please.
Mr. Howard?
Here.
Mr. Rhoadenhaver?
Here.
Mr. Stapleton?
First order of business is a public hearing for S-01 2024 on 4305 Soldiers Home, West Carrollton Road.
All righty, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. Today's order of business is in regard to a rezoning at 4305 Soldiers Home, West Carrollton Road. City lot numbers 4261 and 4262. The applicant is Jesse Hobbs. The lot size for this property is 7.49 acres. The current zoning district is Conservation and the proposed zoning district is R2, or Single Family Residential. So, a little background description from the staff report. The applicant, Jesse Hobbs, of 4305 Soldiers Home, West Carrollton Road, requests for a zoning change from Conservation to the Single Family Residence District. This request is a beginning step for the sale of land and future construction of a new single-family home to his son. The property is at 7.49 acres and is comprised of two lots. Current zoning of Conservation is not in compliance with the 4305 Soldiers Home, West Carrollton Road property, as 10 acres is the minimum law area for correct conservation zoning in our current zoning code. At one time, there were animals on the property, however, there are currently no animals on the property with no plans of animals in the future. If this zoning is recommended by planning commission and the zoning change is approved by city council, a replat will be required for the division of the properties. Montgomery County sanitary line is connectable at the rear of the property for the proposed new home. A water line is also available, or the use of a well can also be applicable for this property. This zoning district change is the first step in formality of this project. The Technical Review Committee, which consists of myself, city manager Michael Davis, fire inspector Doug Hatcher, and community development secretary Beth Waters, we do not have any objections to the proposed zoning change, and we are in favor of single-family home construction on the property. This is also consistent with the future land use map that is in the comprehensive plan, which will actually be brought up later, for single-family land use. It will also bring the property into proper compliance of zoning. That is all I have. If anyone has any questions or anything, I'm more than glad to help answer.
I assume you're Mr. Hobbs? Mrs. Hobbs? Is there anything you would like to say or anything?
Just like having a family.
Very well.
And I'll talk to the neighbors. The neighbors have no problem.
Need a motion? Changes?
In the meeting. We've got to close the public hearing. Are there any opponents or proponents? Did you hear from anyone?
Is there anybody against this here?
I did not receive any phone calls or anything like that, but if there is anyone in the meeting that would like to speak on behalf of that, they can. And then...
Very well. All right.
So, nothing further. Thank you.
So, now this closes the public hearing portion of planning commission. I've called to order the regular business meeting for the planning commission, May 21st, 2024. Now I have a roll, please.
Mr. Howard?
Here.
Mr. Rhoadenhaver?
Yes.
Mr. Stapleton?
Moved. Second?
Mr. Howard? Mr. Rhoadenhaver?
Yes.
Mr. Stapleton? And vice chair. Stapleton? Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Rhoadenhaver?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Their motion for vice chair?
Mr. Howard has a vice chair.
Second.
Upstaying.
Mr. Stapleton? Mr. Howard?
Here. Yes. Upstaying.
Mr. Rhoadenhaver?
That's a little...
We're good, it's fine. Mr. Rhoadenhaver? Oh, thank you. Now the decision for case S-01 2024. Mr. Stapleton? Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Rhoadenhaver? Next is the comprehensive plan, but this case will now go to city.
Okay. You're all good? Good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
It'll be fine.
Ladies and gentlemen, if we could please clear the...
Yes, so for the City of Moraine Comprehensive Plan, this presentation to the planning commission on the comprehensive plan serves as a first step in the adoption process for the City of Moraine. American Structure Point worked with city staff on the creation of this plan that would serve as a guiding document to the city's future. A legal notice was posted in the Dayton Daily News, the city website, and the city televisions within the city structures on May 7th, 2024, for this meeting. I'd like to introduce Matt O'Rourke and Ashley Noonam from American Structure Point, who are here with us today to give the comprehensive plan presentation. These two individuals have been working with the City of Moraine throughout the entire process. They have been assisting the City of Moraine to ensure the comprehensive plan guides Moraine into the future that is based on resident and business interest. After planning commission recommendation, if it goes through, there will be a 30-day notice for a public hearing for city council, where the remaining adoption process will continue. I'd like to thank American Structure Point for all their time and dedication to the City of Moraine, as well to the city staff, residents, business owners, city council, who are all involved in the comprehensive plan. Together, we will shape the City of Moraine to a brighter future. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Nick. Do you need name and address for the record to be stated?
Yeah, I can get it from Nick.
Okay.
That's fine.
Just making sure.
Yeah, thank you very much.
So, kind of skip to this slide. We're here to talk about the comprehensive plan that American Structure Point was brought in in conjunction with city staff to work on the last about a year. It's gone a couple extra months just as we are going through the adoption process here, but pretty much started in earnest in March, April of 2023, and been working on it ever since. My name is Matthew O'Rourke. I am the Planning and Economic Development Group leader for American Structure Point. We're also an engineering firm, but our group is strictly urban planners, zoning ordinance professionals, and landscape architects. And just to provide a little background on myself, worked in the public sector doing a job very similar to Nick's for 15 years before coming over to this side of the coin, and I'll have Ashley introduce herself.
So, I'm Ashley Noonam, senior planner with American Structure Point, and to kind of echo what Matt said, I've also worked in the public sector, and I was a zoning administrator, code enforcement officer, you name it, journalist. So, again, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening.
Thanks. So, yeah, we're really happy, really pleased to be presenting this plan to the commission tonight, and so seeing the culmination of all the effort and work and hard work that went into this. Before, I turn it over to Ashley, who was one of the principal drafters, to really go through the elements of the plan, since I know in talking to staff, there's been a little bit of new folks coming on board and maybe, you know, getting used to the planning commission role. So, we thought we'd do something. We have a couple slides here that are usually a little more at the beginning of the process than we get going, but thought it might be helpful just to help prime the pump, so to speak, for this evening. And so, really, what is a comprehensive plan? It's a guiding document, as Nick said, for the future. It's a checklist that covers the whole community. It's high level, it's meant to be 20, 30,000 foot, so to speak, broad strokes, policy statements, things along those lines. It's a combination of who we want to be and a vision statement, and also a checklist of to-do items, and those are some of the things we'll get into in a little bit. Purpose is, it's a roadmap for efficient decision-making. It's really for bodies such as the planning commission and city council to use when they have rezonings. It was kind of timely that one came through this evening to sort of reference, but Nick said in his staff report during that previous item that he referenced the future land use map in this document. That's one of the more important pieces, so we'll be talking about that a little bit. But also, it's baked and it's really steeped in public engagement. We did a lot, we're going to talk about that in a few slides, about that, but it's so that policymakers, decision-makers know that what was in this plan came from the community. It was ground-sourced. It really is a reflection of what we heard and what we went through throughout this whole process. So, there's a really good sense of, hey, we're doing what the community wants. So, when zoning redecisions, such as the one comes in front of this group, you could say, all right, it's on the map, this is the one the community reviewed, you know, this is what we all agree to, we want as the future development for Moraine. Couple of important distinctions about comprehensive plans I wanted to highlight, or what they are. It's a document, but it is not zoning. I want to kind of spell those two things out. Comprehensive plans are recommendations, they're guiding documents, but they're not law. They go through, they get approved as a resolution, which means you are allowed to use them to make decisions and use them as evidence to say no to certain rezoning requests or other requests, but it's not zoning. You know, that is the law, you have to meet those. These are more recommendation items, and I really kind of wanted to hit that home tonight, since I know there's some onboarding going on and those things. But in Ohio, it's even a little more varied, because in Ohio, this is one of the few states where you don't have to have a comprehensive plan to have a zoning ordinance. Most other states, they require the future land use map at minimum before you create your zoning ordinance. Ohio's a little different, but what Ohio law does say is, if you have a comprehensive plan, you can use that to make decisions that affect your zoning ordinance. So, that's why it's really important, that's why Ohio communities want to do that. And so, does anybody have any questions on that, kind of in the high level? I know we're all getting used to these terms and concepts, so I want to make sure I'm not glossing over something that maybe you want me to hit a little more detail on. Great. With that, I'll turn it over to Ashley, and she's going to launch right into the comp plan.
Thanks, Matt. So, as Matt alluded to, the future land use map is an essential element, but of course, we kind of try to summarize the spirit of the document in a vision statement, which is going to in turn inform our goals and objectives, you know, what are we trying to accomplish and how are we going to get there? And then, lastly, the critical path strategies, it's called a couple of different things in other plans, but at least this is what we term your implementation plan. What can you do in the near term, maybe next five years, to start implementing the comprehensive plan today? So, more on that later. And as Matt and Nick said, we've been working on this process for some time, and this is just, we kind of tried to break down the process again to make sure that it's a well-informed document, and to Phase 1, being educated, this is when we're going to be getting to know the community through demographic analysis, talking to folks, that kind of thing. Explore, this is when we're actually starting to draft and have it come together, and then empower is when we're saying, okay, well, how do we actually implement this document in the future? Okay, talking to stakeholders, like Matt said, we did a lot of public engagement, again, trying to make sure this document's based in reality, make sure it's what the community wants. I see some familiar faces from our stakeholder interviews. Good to see you again. And like Nick said, it's not only just residents, but it's the community, the business community, it's your nonprofits, it's trying to look at things holistically, and what's going to really serve the community best. We did run an online survey, and we were happy to see that, you know, we had a good response, we had about 200 and some responses, and for a community of your size, that's really good. And then 70% of those were residents, again, and then listed below, you know, we went to egg hunt. And our philosophy is really to go where the people are, where people want to be. Nobody really wants to be in a, like, stuffy workshop or open house. We do do those when we have to, however, it's not our first pick. Again, we like to go where the community is, and also make sure that we're engaging all age, all ages, all walks of life, that kind of thing. So, that's kind of where we've found our success, and that was definitely the case in Moraine. So, what we do is, we take all this information and we kind of synthesize it. We look at it and say, what bubbles to the top? And that actually became the chapters of the comprehensive plan. The themes are listed here, as far as, you know, Moraine wants a sense of place, they want to have a community branding, talking about, you know, rental properties or just general community aesthetics and property maintenance. Moraine's crown jewel is the parks and rec system. So, what can we do, how can we leverage that in the future? Generally, economic development, you have a strong industrial heritage, as well as, you know, a strong business community, businesses love working with Moraine. How do we keep that momentum going? Housing, just like everybody in the United States, there's a housing shortage, and how can we address those gaps as far as what people can afford versus what stocking, housing stock is there? Land use, again, that's the future land use map, and kind of how do we want to guide and inform policy decisions in the future, such as your zoning code? And then, lastly, infrastructure, you know, how, it's good to put colors on a map, however, how are we going to, how is that going to function as far from an engineering standpoint? Like we said, we have an engineering team in-house, and so how are we going to do that with water, sewer? We spoke to those providers. Okay, and here's the land use map that we were talking about. What we heard from the community is really that we don't want to necessarily disrupt the way that land uses, whether they're commercial, industrial, Moraine has a really kind of mature, organic kind of way of development, and we didn't want to necessarily shake that up a whole lot. However, we did want to make sure that there were land uses for the future that keep Moraine competitive and pursue the things that they want to pursue, such as trailer-oriented development and regional commercial, mixed uses, neighborhood commercial, like, you know, a small neighborhood shopping area, you know, all these things, single unit attached to residential to address, you know, a variety of housing to address the housing shortage. So, and that's exactly what we did, and we kind of did something unique to help situate Moraine in the best way. And then we offered an alternate land use. So, again, keep what's there, but also have the option to, if the right investor comes along, if a business comes along and says, you know, I like the ideas that you have in your comprehensive plan, let's do it, you can partner with them, and then your land use map will not hold you back as far as in a rezoning process. Basically, we'll offer an expedient approval process for those things.
Yeah, if I might just interject real quick. When talking with staff and the community, the reason we went with this approach with these alternate land uses, it basically gives you two possible futures on those designated focus areas. One is, it stays the way it is now, and one is, here's this alternative, if developed forever is interested, as Ashley was mentioning. And the thought process there was, is we didn't want any property owners, somebody that owns a home, for instance, or an office building, to think, oh, I'm not allowed to, like, be my use anymore? That was really important to this project, and in particular to staff, to make sure that people that own a property now know that they can continue being whatever that use is that they currently are into the future, until such a point where they're ready to say, oh, maybe I want to work with a developer and sell my land, or something like that. But wanted to make sure they didn't feel like they were being forced or bottlenecked into a land use option that necessarily didn't fit what's currently there. So, that, I just wanted to highlight that, because that was very important, to make sure that the residents were safeguarded in that respect.
Thanks, Matt. Hey, and so here's our implementation plan, like, you know, this is all well and good, but how do we get there, these, you know, these high-level ideas? And this is where we actually, in the document, you look, we have a timeline, when you could probably pursue these ideas, maybe ballpark of what it would cost, and maybe some stakeholders in your community you consider contacting to make a successful effort. So, and again, it's kind of like, not one chapter will have one critical path. Critical path is really a great way, how we can kind of elegantly or efficiently address maybe multiple objectives. So, it's not just a critical path for infrastructure, you know, it also has implications on land use, or something like that. So, just letting you know that that's, the critical path is where it really all comes together.
Yeah, just to elaborate on that a little bit, within the plan document, there's the various sections with different types of content. There's approximately 70 strategies overall, when you go through all that. These critical path strategies are ones that our advisory group or ad hoc committee specifically, like cherry-picked out of that and said, here's the 12, or so that we want to implement in the next five years. And so, these are the same as those in the actual plan sections, we've just, we've put them into this implementation section, that's kind of like, let's do these now. These are the ones that are right.
So, first and foremost, like we were talking about, we offered these alternative land uses, and so with that, one of our first critical path strategies is to take a look, hard look at your zoning code, and maybe how it relates to your approval processes, and how it can further support the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. We see this as a kind of like a economic development piece, in the way that it will, like I said, help expedite any kind of approval process for, you know, a development that does meet your goals and objectives. It helps keep the good businesses that are here, because you're constantly, when you're updating the zoning code, you can make sure that there's nothing standing, there are no barriers in your code that stand in the way of those businesses expanding or pursuing new technology and helping Moraine keep its edge. And then, also, it helps address housing stock shortage in the way that it, you may introduce housing options that may not have been permitted previously. So, we were talking about those alternate land use areas. So, those came out of a focused area development. I can go back real quick, actually. So, you can see these kind of, these boxes coming out of the future land use map. Those are pointing to the areas that we heard from the community that we need to really focus our attention to and spend a little more time exploring in depth, because they're gateways, yeah, or like along Main Street, it's just a focal point for activity between Wax Park and the city building. So, these were the areas where we felt we could get the most bang for our buck when looking at future development plans. So, and again, it's like, just a way to, when you're looking at a focus area, you're thinking about, you know, concentrating your development efforts as far as infrastructure and that kind of thing, like, and we really heard from folks from the business community, they would like to take their executive, you know, their C-suite, out-of-town guests somewhere, and, you know, maybe we can get a focus area there on Dorsey Lane to, you know, mixed use, so you can have this whole cluster of live, work, play. And then, just it improves connectivity through, you know, whether it's trails or road infrastructure. But here's an example from Dorsey Lane. Like I said, they, we heard from business community and from other people, you know, I want somewhere where I can take, you know, I want more restaurant options, I want more retail options, I want a, they want a hotel for out-of-town guests that's in town, instead of having them go to some other community. So, that's why we chose this focus area to provide kind of that development cluster. Again, this is the alternative land use, we're not proposing necessarily that you off-the-bat change what's already there, there's been some investment in the area, and we don't want to discount that from your business community, but again, provide that option if that development, if that developer comes along and says, this is an idea that I want to invest in. Wayfinding plan, so we heard from a lot of people, whether stakeholders or just general community, it's like, I didn't know that was in Moraine. They would look at our map and it just, they're so, Moraine has so much variation, and it stretches a great deal. So, the way to address that and kind of get this common sense of community and a common look, community brand, is through a wayfinding plan. And we heard from a lot of people that Moraine has so much, and nobody knows it's here, and we want, we want to get that word out. So, the wayfinding plan was what we felt was a critical path strategy that came out of that process, what people felt was something that was, we need to do now. And not to discount, just to say, there's a picture there of, like, Moraine has actually started this already, it's just more of kind of like flushing this out and finishing it. Related to that is, we heard from a lot of folks that when I come off the highway, I don't, again, I don't really know where I am, or I'm not really, maybe sometimes at night, it's not so welcoming off certain exits, and how do we, can we kind of, you know, make that more inviting? Well, one way to announce that Moraine is here and everything it has to offer is enhancing seller's bridge. You may have seen it in other communities where they, along the fencing on the bridge, they put some decorative items, some aesthetic items, and it's just a way to put the community's name out there, and then also tell the rest of the world what Moraine is, and what you all are proud of, so.
I think I'd be remiss if I didn't say, these are just concepts, you know, obviously there's a lot of engineering, a lot of other things that need to go into this. This is just one idea that one of our designers came up with, to highlight Moraine's heritage with the biplanes, enhance the look, and, but it's a county-owned and also state-owned bridge, so they actually own and joint the whole structure itself, so there'd be more to come on this, it'd be, you know, a long time, there's big budget considerations, but as Ashley highlighted, what a great way to really make a statement, like, hey, this is Moraine. We wanted to get that process, that thought process started.
Yeah, it's just, it's a lot easier when you're approaching ODOT or somebody to have kind of an idea of saying, well, what about this, opposed, that's what this plan hopes to offer, it's just a conversation starting point, so you can move forward. I mentioned before that one of the focus areas was along Main Street, between city building where we are and Wax Park. And we're just, again, like Matt said, this is just a concept. This map is showing what could Main Street become. You know, if you put a little bit of neighborhood commercial in here, or an amphitheater, or a food truck court, or maybe an interactive play area, just to kind of along Vance there, or, you know, just put some artwork to maybe, again, you're creating almost like a district, focal point of activity, and maybe this is a way to, how you could start that master plan.
This is, I just wanted to mention, this is very much in response to what we heard through the public engagement efforts, which was, Moraine doesn't have a central meeting. And we, as we looked at it, we talked to more people, we talked, we do, it's here between city hall and the rec center, it's just, it's not necessarily embellished yet, so that's what this is trying to do, take the existing infrastructure started here, and add on top of that, get people to walk between those...
to walk between those two facilities or feel like walking between those two facilities is one, an option, two, that starts to create, here's Moraine's kind of central meeting.
Yeah, the concept with this, the concept that we have in front of you there is, the idea is that somebody can come and visit and bring their family or bring whomever and park once and have a lot to do and spend their time in Moraine and at the same time, come and see the things that are already great. Another thing, again, I mentioned how well-loved, and we heard this resoundingly, how well-loved the park system is. And again, it's not necessarily wanting to change it completely. It's more of, we need to take inventory of what we have and how do we want to move forward in the future? Just more of getting those ideas onto paper. And that's what the Parks Master Plan achieves. What it also does is if you align it with the state's goals for parks and recreation, it opens up some funding opportunities. So if you see a park that needs a little love, you know, needs some more playground equipment, that's when ODNR might be able to offer funds for that project. So that's, again, it's more of just, Moraine actually has a real wealth of parks and recreation space for a community of its size. And that's, that's what the Parks Master Plan would just, again, just get these ideas on paper of how that will look in the future. Okay. And our last two critical path strategies were having like a regular local business owner meetings. I mentioned before how this business community said they really love working with the city staff, they love working with the city, they feel that they have, really have a partner with the city. And to, again, not change that, but to make that even bigger is maybe have a quarterly or semi-annual meeting that the city hosts to get the business community in conversation, to find those opportunities for synergy, to find those opportunities for partnership with the city and to grow those relationships. It's just a way to make sure that you're in touch with the business community or you continue to be in touch with the community by having engaged satisfaction and see how you can further support them. But yeah, it's, it kind of came, there was a case study that was from Chicago, actually, it was called the Empower Order. They went out and had a whole radio program, that kind of thing. But then what they would do is just interview folks and maybe provide resources or make people aware of what resources are available to businesses. Hey, I was struggling with that. And if I hadn't attended that meeting, I would have not known that that resource was available. So that's, that's the objective of this local business owner meeting. And then lastly, is the rental inspection program. So we heard a lot of concerns about property maintenance for rentals particularly. What this would be, would be, so every two years, have an interior and exterior inspection in partnership with the property owner. And it protects not only the community aesthetics, but also protects the renters, making sure that their living quarters are not substandard, that they're not being taken advantage by some landlord or something. It's really, it benefits everyone. So that's, that's kind of where we, and with that, you could, and we've seen with other communities, have like a checklist. You really want to be transparent in that process and saying, this is what we're looking for, this is how to meet the standards. And again, putting the word out there, advertising how to connect to that resource with the city.
Just one little add on to that, Montgomery County already has a rental registration requirement. Anything that's registered through, this would be just taking that one step further, having appropriated that folks go and look at the properties.
And lastly, just to sort of, I guess Nick already touched on this, but yeah, our adoption schedule is, again, we're asking for a recommendation tonight for the, to go to city council. Your recommendation would be taken into consideration for the adoption of this comprehensive plan. And so if we have your favorable recommendation tonight, the plan will go on to a couple of hearings with final adoption in August 8th.
All seems very good.
Good, we've done our jobs. So yeah, at this time, we'd like to open it to any questions. Again, thank you so much for listening to us tonight and thank you so much for allowing us to work with your community. It's been our real pleasure putting this plan together and speaking to everyone and yeah.
Yeah, and thanks to Moraine's staff, they were a big help throughout the process. Helping us at public engagement events, helping us get set up, being with us in stakeholder meetings, it was really great to work together with everybody. So I really appreciate it.
Right.
Thank you so much for coming and quite a bit.
Yes.
We know it's a lot to digest in a 15 to 20 minute presentation for sure. The good news is, until it's formally adopted, we can still make updates. So if you're reading through it and you're like, oh, I don't know about this or anything about this, but by all means, flag a four, we're happy to work it, to work through with staff, make sure we need it.
Absolutely. Don't be shy because as like Matt's saying, it's a natural part of the adoption process. There are always inevitably changes that need to be made or tweaks.
Roll.
Howard?
Yes.
Spend all this time and all this money on this. Bad if we didn't pass it.
Chairman Roederhafer, may I make a few comments?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to touch on a couple of parts of it, the branding side of the identity side. That has been something that the city has struggled with for years. We have somewhere between 14 to 16 different signs throughout our city, depending on where you're coming in. One of my goals over five years ago, city manager, so you can see how long this has taken, was to try to create a consistent fabric throughout the city so you knew when you were entering our city boundaries. So we think that part of the comprehensive plan will go a long way to be able to allow us to do that. Maybe pursue some grant dollars, maybe not. But again, we have a unified approach where the community came in, both the business side and the residential side, and indicated that that was one of the top things they felt we needed to do, was to really get our, get our identity established. That doesn't necessarily mean moving away from our existing logo or even our city seal, which is just bringing consistency throughout the city. Regarding the bridge, I wanted to touch on the fact that one of the end goals that came from many of our ad hoc committee meetings was the fact that, you know, how do we create a better connectivity between the east and the west side of the city? And we feel the way we do that is to not have that bridge be so industrial or even kind of prison feeling and looking with the fencing. You know, again, as you drive on 75 or 70, you see some very enhanced areas. We don't own it. This will be a long-term goal prospect. I think Matt talked about it a little bit. That's partly owned by ODOT and the other half of that bridge is owned by the county. It's not even owned by one, one specific entity. So we got to get them to play well together, which they are. And then of course, we have to go out and try to look for amenity monies because if we can get them to make improvements to the bridge, which if you saw in that one rendering, the suggestion is you wouldn't have a walkway on both sides. The walkway on the south side would go away, it would go to the north, it would be expanded for better safety for pedestrians and bicyclists. And then it would be much more of a friendly walking environment. And then the amenities side would be the aesthetics, the exterior of the bridge along the fence and doing some things that would allow people to feel a little more comfortable when they're walking over the bridge and create that long-term connectivity and growth possibilities on Main Street. There was also mention of a Parks Master Plan. Council actually already funded, well, okay, they put money in the budget to fund a Parks Master Plan for 2024. Our Parks Director, Brent Shane, is actually printing or providing the two proposals that we received from the request for proposals at this Thursday night's council meeting. And then council make a decision on who they would like to go with. One of them fell just outside the budget, so there needs to be a discussion on that. That process, if council moves forward, will take about a year. And Matt really did a great job, or Ashley touching on this, which was, when that's in place, we have a lot of parks and maybe too many parks, I think, was some of the consensus in these meetings. So how do we capitalize and use our ground better? Should some of it be passive use, where it's just walking trails? And then we put our emphasis on infrastructure and parks in certain areas instead of all the smaller community parks? So that's what the Park Master Plan would do. And then ultimately, we had heard that without that, we don't have much of a chance in pursuing grant dollars.
Yeah, for land and water conservation funds that are administered by the Ohio Department. It's not a requirement that you have a plan in Ohio, but it definitely helps your score when they're grading against one person. Being in, having a plan and a project that's in line with your plan that also lines up with the state's goals, those three working together really help with funding.
And I think the property maintenance, the housing inspection, that's pretty much, you know, they're cohesive, they work together. Every community struggles with this and with property maintenance. We wanted to put something in here that was an action item. We have actually been doing that. We've already taken some initiative where we're posting mo signs and yards now. That just started over the last week or two. Is that right?
Yes.
About a week or two on that. We've actually received a pretty good response. We feel that that does two things. One, it's letting that property owner know, hey, this needs to be get done. But also the concerning neighbors who wants that property taken care of, it lets them know that the city is actually doing something. Because if they don't see the posting on the door, they may not know that we've been working on it for a long time. And it, this is not a surprise to anybody. It's a long-term struggle to get property maintenance violations addressed. It's got to go through mayor's court system, then sometimes it goes on to Kettering Court. Often times, they get a small fine and they get more time to clean it up, which their history indicates they're not going to do. And you end up going back through the process again. So we wanted that to be a nice piece of the comp plan to kind of help us out, steer us in the right direction. But I wanted to let you know, we've made some significant improvements on that over the past couple of weeks and it helps tremendously. We've hired some new staff. We had an engineer who started yesterday and our building and zoning administrator started a week ago. So that's really going to help us because now we have three or four staff members that will all be addressing property maintenance throughout the city. So, thank you. Oh, yeah. Yep. Yeah, but again, please understand that these things, unfortunately, we want them to happen overnight, but sometimes they don't. If the history of that property owner or the property itself is one that doesn't abide or adhere to the ordinances, it just doesn't get fixed the next day. I think a lot of people sometimes are surprised they call in and then Ben or Nick or someone says, actually, we have four citations on that property and we've been trying to get them to clean it up for three months. And so we have to follow, you know, the regulations the state allows us to work under. Yeah, yeah. So.
Any further, sir?
Thank you, that's it. Thank you.
Take it to a vote. Process onward.
Stapleton? Sir Howard?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, everyone.
There is no further business for the planning commission. Close of the meeting at 6:43.